Good evening, welcome to our school meeting. It's Monday, December 12th, 2022. Six o'clock, one six and tell the lives that were in the community, seven building. Call meetings order and ask us for more questions.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Well, Mr. Gayheart is excused. Mrs. Ingersoll?
Here.
Mr. Martel?
Here.
Colonel Donald? Mrs. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Scarrow?
Here.
Ms. Colton?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
We have a quorum, we will continue. I will note, tonight's meeting has no diversity statutes. Do we have any communication to discuss?
I have not received any communications regarding any communication.
All right, we'll suspense reading that, go straight to approval of our coordinates from November 28. Questions, comments? Are you done looking for motion?
I move to approve the minutes on the November 28th, 2022 regular sessions school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved to second to approve the minutes on the November 28th, 2022 regular sessions school board meeting as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart is excused. Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Oh? Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. General other fund bills, Mr. Truitt.
The general other fund bills this evening coverage checks number 147999 to 148134, wire number 4622470 and 504514, ACH number 324371 and one voided check 147415 with a total amount of $724,262.88. And then the end of the bill listing is a copy of the Treasury's report due month of October. And then should we receive a memo on some explanation on some of the bills?
Questions, Mr. Truitt?
Yeah, Mr. Truitt, could you address the ACA US Treasury subsidy qualifying?
Certainly. Now, that's in reference to the Affordable Care Act. And as an employer, there's two criteria under the original Affordable Care Act that we need to comply with. One is what's called the minimum essential opportunity for full-time staff to participate in health insurance. And I believe the percentage is 90 or 95% of the employees to have that eligibility. And full-time is considered employees that work 30 hours or more per week. And we offer that for all of our staff that work 30 hours or more. Then the second criteria is in reference to those, it has to do with affordability. So for some of our part-time staff, the district contribution is a proration amount. And if an individual goes to the marketplace, receives insurance, and also qualifies for a subsidy, then there's a penalty piece that the employer pays. So what you see there calls for two employees that met that criteria in 2020.
Does that fall in because of the calendar year? And, I mean, they work 30 hours per week or whatever, but since it's calendar year, does that kind of fall into the equation?
Well, it's always calculated on calendar year.
Okay.
They would have met the second criteria, which means they received a subsidy.
Okay.
One of those analysis we went through originally when the Affordable Care Act came into play and realized that wasn't possible liability for the district. I think this is the second time since the ACA's been in the name. Without naming names, I can tell you those two individuals who work part-time are now full-time with the district.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I was just wondering with the transition of health insurance and all the crazy rules and regulations that fall in and, you know, would it be some of those people who are working the minimum hours to acquire it, but it doesn't make financial sense to have the district policy that they could get something on the ACA for a better thing and then we subsidize it? Or I didn't, I didn't understand what it was and it was just kind of like, hmm. That's kind of, yeah, we want to provide health coverages for everyone that qualify.
So Bill, were they 30-hour employees or they weren't about yet?
No, they were then. Again, it's two-part criteria. So we'll provide health insurance for all our employees that need the definition of full-time employees by the federal government. It's $30 or more. The contribution rates though is proration. So for those individuals, if they go to the marketplace and get coverage and they qualify for a federal subsidy, both those criteria need to happen, then there's the penalty piece, so.
And I believe they just raised the minimum requiring, or for a federal subsidy. So you can actually make more now and still get federally subsidized.
Usually adjusted almost yearly, but it's not a scale.
And am I understanding it correctly that these are for claims from 2020?
2020, correct. It takes down long.
So that's why?
Yes.
Yeah, because now they're full-time.
Correct.
Yeah. Do we should see this again?
We all see it again for those employees.
For those employees.
I did have one other question as well. For the projector refresh, how often do we refresh those projectors?
That's a better question probably from Mr. Dragan, but I'm thinking probably five years or so. And bulbs get bad, now they got the LED units and they last a little longer.
I think most of the projectors, when you see them on a refresh, they're replacing the ones with a long throw. So they're probably, most of them I guess are more like 10 years.
So they're actually replacing the whole thing, they're not just updating an old one?
Right, so they're just replacing, because these new ones that are the short throw, on the old ones, the bulbs cost just as much as the unit, they're like $300 to replace a bulb. These new ones, the bulbs were $20 bucks or something.
Okay.
So when you see that refresh, it's switching from the long throw to the short throw.
Got it. So we're not like every three years?
It's just we have so many classrooms.
Yeah.
I think Randy, they had like a five-year transition period to get through. That may be where the five years was coming from, to get to the short throw projector.
Got it, yeah. I know these were for Jackson, LA, that's great. I think the order was for a much larger amount this summer, but they're slowly coming in. So that's why you're seeing that's in the winter.
Okay, so we're not taking old units and refurbishing or replacing them, we're buying new ones, we're replacing the old, okay.
And then hopefully these newer ones, although like you hear the fan on this one.
Yeah.
Let me know, but these laser ones are supposed to, you know, we should get at least 10 years this, the whole part of those. And we can, the power supply in the bulbs are a lot cheaper.
Other questions?
I move to approve the general other fund bills of December 12th, 2022. Check numbers 147999 to 148134. Wire numbers 4622470 and 504514. ACH numbers 324371 and voided check number 147415 in a combined amount of $724,262.88 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
So moved to second to approve the general other fund bills of December 12th, 2022. Checks number 147999 to 148134. Wire numbers 4622470 and 504514. ACH numbers 324371 and voided check number 147415 in a combined amount of $724,262.88.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart is excused, sorry. Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Colonel?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
So rarely, Mr. Gayheart. Report discussion items to the board.
Oh, can I get, I just want to make one more point on our systems, because it's something that, I mean, we did, I know Randy takes pride in, I think we take a lot of pride in how efficient we are with it. To give you an idea, this classroom setup with the board and the projector, off the top of my head, I believe it's just around $2,000 total cost for that. To give you an idea, at Gateway, because we've worked with them on the career in college academy, and they're doing a refresh of their classroom systems and their Wolf brand systems that they're putting in, were about 18 to 20,000 for the classroom. And we said, well, timeout, we appreciate that it's going to take you five years to get this, especially at that point. Can we step it up? Because they need these. And so it's, when you're looking at the price point for what we opted the classrooms, what we utilize, it's a very large projection, it's a very large screen. If we were to go with the televisions, the interactive TVs, they run about 8,000 a unit and they're significantly smaller than that. So it's, it's just one of those ways where we get a really good product that works at a much more economical price. What you may see in some of the other classrooms are. All right, sorry, I just wanted to point that out.
Student in your book, please.
So for Westside, they had a holiday program. And then they had a sweater dress up there. And then the top picture is running PE tags with the cross sticks. And then for the end of the trimester, they had a game, a game after. And then Tivitz on Friday had recess in the snow, which I hope it gives all wrong. Math class, they were doing numbers lots, so like the tens, the ones and the hundreds. They had a dome night day for, I think it was an incentive, it was good. So it's like they had iPods and then they had a spirit day as well. At Jackson, they're making treats in our class. They used M&amp;M's for math, when doing calculus and graphing. They had a family fun night and played holiday bingo. And then the students listed down there are moving to a semi-final mediator for the state. The middle school, they brought season six of Kickstarter Week, which is lived on there. And then the older stuff are doing a baby sale this week as a fundraiser during our lunch. The high school culinary corps finished their season unit. The varsity girls' basketball team does Little Alex Basketball, which is where they go to the middle school and help out elementary kids at basketball. I know speaking to my friends, on the basketball team, they really enjoy giving it. And then the horror culture class brought out their centerpieces into a fun lobby and displayed them for us.
So did either of you get to try the sushi from the culinary arts class?
I'd use two, so.
It looked good.
And then that option, they went to a field trip to the dancing horses in Lake Geneva. They had their holiday concert reversal. And then they had a world performance with the Nutcracker. And then options also included a presentation that they sent to us, going more into about 10 than they did. So. Can I go back to slides? This is more pictures of the Nutcracker. They had like students go up and help explain the story of it. And then this one, it was like being modeled by your face, which was kind of cute. And then they introduced a new court field, I believe. Yeah, so that was just kind of. And CCA may get very hard this week, but they're doing a holiday workshop, so you can go in and like create gifts. Like they'll help you. And then on Saturday, last, or last Sunday, yesterday, or two Sundays ago, there's a holiday cookie and bake and take, so you can go in and like bake cookies and then take them home.
Were those classes, or both of those, were they for adults or students? I always wondered, it never really said.
Yeah, and these were the holiday cookie bake and take, those look like mostly adults. And then I don't know about the.
These were both community service programs. I think CCA was on their, were they on their two weeks rotation offer?
No. They're just posted on their Facebook page.
Yeah, I was going to say, I saw the holiday workshop post tonight, I saw both of them. There was nothing.
Yeah, these were adult ones, sort of these.
Okay.
Engagement.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Bill, you want the mouse?
All right. The board, so we're at the last board meeting, we talked a little bit about the possibility of presenting a referendum to the public as early as this April. And we started putting together a number of kind of just general information pieces and a number of decisions that will need to be made as we kind of journey through that. So to kind of help through that process, you should have a link to this. It's, it's really kind of a workbook. And I just kind of want to share what's in here, first of all, and then we'll kind of come back. In this workbook, I spent most of the time on the financial analysis tonight, but I just wanted you to at least be aware, that's kind of the first page. But some of this, I also need to recognize Mr. Trotter, because he's working on his certification and some coursework. So he helped me put some of this together, so thank you, Chris. You're welcome. But we also, as part of this, just to give kind of a history of our revenue cap and how that's changed over time. So that might be some information that might become relevant as we start looking at some of this information. Some sample referendum questions. So what did, what did other districts do this last November, in terms of what questions they asked? Because the language is an important piece of this. And you, you look at this, you can kind of get a sense of how they worded different things and what their intent was, in addition to the amounts. I thought that might be helpful as we kind of develop our own language related to this potential referendum. And then Chris was able to pull together the results of the November referendum. So what you have here is the school district, the amounts that was dead, who was operational, the status in terms of results, and then also linked in there what their websites might look like in terms of what they were sharing with the public. And a couple of the districts, I think that we, we kind of like in terms of what they particular, Oregon school districts thought was laid out really nice. At some prairies, you know, all the Dane County schools basically went to a referendum, but you'll see kind of get a sense of a flavor of what other districts have done as well. And then there it always puts together kind of the referendum results. So it's always gives us a sense of what was asked and how many referendums were presented this past November, how many would have been presented even for the calendar year and then the success rate. And this is kind of a nice graph that gives you a little more detail on that. Upcoming referendum dates, I think we talked about this at the last board meeting. And then I thought this would be helpful, and Jody pulled this together, and that was kind of our referendum results from the last referendum. Just to get a sense going back to 2015, number of voters, how the questions were presented, both in terms of, you know, April 15, then November 16, and then April 2020. So gives us a sense of kind of, you know, the number of voters that we might see for a given referendum. And then the last piece was really kind of looking at what are some of the questions we may see? And it just started listing out those questions, and haven't put together the response yet, but maybe we'll end up with about 10 questions we'll want to address. Part of that might be our communication through back sheets, Facebook, also looking at our website and other ways of making sure the public's informed of whatever the question becomes for, for the school district. So anyway, this is just more of a workbook than anything else, but I just wanted to kind of share with the board what's, what's out there. Going back to the financial analysis, you know, all of this is, I was starting to look at this in terms of what would we be asking the public to approve, gets back to what are we assuming? What are we assuming in terms of revenue, state funding, what's our expenses going to look like? And it does become some projection. And I wanted to spend a couple of minutes with the board just to kind of get your sense of comfort level on a couple of different scenarios. And scenarios relating to like the revenue cap per pupil increase, any categorical aid adjustments, special ed aid. We also have that SIR funds that we aren't running out. Looking at our expenditures, what do we think wages and salaries might look like in the next couple of years? What do we think about benefits? What do we think about utilities? All other expenses, enrollment, property values. And then based on those assumptions, what does the revenues look like? What does the expense looks like? And then what's the difference between those two? So for illustration purposes, we put together really three scenarios, but we could have infinite number of scenarios. The first scenario is really looking at a per pupil increase of about $200 per year. And if you look historically what the state has done, that's probably pretty reflective of the typical year. Some years it's been a little more. You go back to the 90s, it was based on the CPI. So it probably would have been much larger today if it used that criteria. But that's where if you kind of look at this chart, you get kind of a sense of, this is kind of that $200 range. So if you go back over time, that's kind of how it's been, it's increased slightly from that level. And then you had an ACT 10, and since then, it's kind of been all over the place until the last biennium. So that's kind of what we put together as being kind of the base. Then over here on the far right, which is in yellow, is the governor's proposal. And at this stage, it's the only proposal we have out there, and it's probably the most optimistic proposal in terms of funding.
Yeah.
So that's kind of where you kind of have your two scenarios, and then I put one in between, which is kind of a midway between those.
Bill, could you go back to that chart, the Wisconsin revenue cap? To give you a sense too, from when you see those first two where they drop down to that $200, prior to that drop, Wisconsin was 11th in the nation on spending per pupil and education. This last report that came out last year put us at 25th in the nation, so we dropped substantially. And it's projected will be well into the, probably the mid-30s by the time the next cycle comes out, which reflects our $0 revenue of an increase from these past two years. Will probably put us on that bottom, potentially 15 states in the nation soon.
So again, scenario one is kind of the base, what else is the $200 per student? And rather than going just with the biennium, it cuts it out one more year, so we look kind of the three-year window. You could have looked at a four-year window, but the further we go out, we become second to us reliable in terms of projections. To be honest with you, probably scenario three is a very optimistic view. My opinion, option one, probably closer, maybe option two or something in between. But I think as we look at what we may be asking the public to approve, it's trying to get to a point of comfort of what do we at least projecting, what do we feel comfortable with?
Do you have status quo for enrollment all the way across? Are you going off of those first numbers though?
Yeah.
Or how many are going out and coming in?
Yeah, basically using where we're at today, Jenny saying that's going to stay pretty much at that level.
Can you explain categorical aid versus?
Yeah, what the state has done, and it kind of gets back to this sheet here. Rather than increasing the revenue cap every year, say by $200, because when they do that, depending on what they put in the equalization aid formula, it has a different effect on property taxpayers. For example, Lake Geneva, who doesn't receive necessarily any state aids, they don't necessarily see property tax relief, right? That's one of the. So they've gone to a categorical aid or a blend of categorical aid to increase in the revenue cap just to distribute so that all school districts receive something. So that was kind of the rationale. So you can see in yellow, that represents that per pupil categorical aid, which is right now about $742 per student, so.
So the numbers here would be an increase over that?
Correct, yeah. So you can, and it gets to kind of detail here in terms of where do you think the increase is going to be? Because some years, it may be $100 on a per pupil revenue cap, and then put $100 in a categorical aid. When you cost it out at the end, it doesn't make a huge bit of difference. So for illustration purposes, I didn't really put a lot of increase in that other than scenario two. And then the governor put in $24 the first year, $45, I don't know how he came to those numbers, but again, it does represent though an increase in revenue, when you put monies in those categories. And then the categorical aid for special ed, we're currently at about 30% reimbursement. And in all scenarios, I assume that might be increasing some. There seems to be a little traction of trying to put more money in special education. So I use 35, I think in the base, scenario two. And I think the governor actually assumed even a larger increase.
Yeah.
You know, 45 and then 60% reimbursement, so. And then on, again, on the expense side, I had wages down 4% for like next year and then three and a half, three and a half. Health insurance, I just assumed 10%.
Biggest unknown, yeah, that you really can't guess.
Utilities, I figured at least a 5% each year. And then everything else about 3.5%. And then property values, I had like a 3% for next year, then a 2% each year after that.
I think it's leveling off.
Yeah, and you know, what we may see beyond that would be more market adjustment than anything.
True.
So thoughts or comments on the scenarios? Again, on the expense side, they're all are the same. It's just what are we comfortable with from a revenue standpoint? And what, what do we think might happen? Any opinions, thoughts?
I think scenario three is pretty unlikely. Scenario two, possibly.
I think we had scenario one.
Put James up there, that's where I go, is James up there?
Yeah, right.
It's, it doesn't change in all of them, I mean, to be honest.
No, they're not a huge.
There's not a huge difference.
No.
But I think that, I think you're going to end up somewhere between. It's impossible to say.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be true, because they want to negotiate at this point, so that means they're not going to prove that.
A vacant area, you know, Mrs. Fisher mentioned that, especially with the health cost, that's kind of a crab shoot there. You know, in the past, because we did a great job over basically an eight-year period, keeping that down to about a 2% total increase. But what we've seen lately is our staff, our average staff age is 47. And our utilization rate that we saw last year without doing significant changes to our policy and, and working with them, we have a great company aside that we're working with. But that, I believe the initial costs were 50% increase.
Initial?
And that was with, you know, we raised the deductible, we did a lot of, we, we had companies that wouldn't even bid on our, we wanted to go to self-insured, and they wouldn't even bid on the, what's that? The loss gap insurance or the.
Stop loss.
The stop loss insurance, they wouldn't even give us quotes on because of how high our utilization was and concerns over that. The stop loss insurance, they wouldn't even give us quotes on because of how high our utilization was and concerns over that. And/or they wanted to, you know, laser employees over very high costs that would put too much light on. So my concern is, in the past, everyone said, oh my gosh, we can absolutely be 10%. That, that may be with significant changes or being in that adjustment, just unless we all get really helping achieve.
I'd give students 10% and hope for something better.
Yeah. I just put that out there because it wouldn't surprise me of, yeah, we have to be higher than 10%.
So with those different scenarios and kind of leaning towards that scenario one, that's when you start getting into the projection model. So one of the things then started to do, right at the moment, I don't have any numbers in here, but if I plug those in, let's see. Jason, you got to plug them. Can you put 200 in there?
Okay.
And then put 200 in there. Okay. Get out here. So you'll see here that we have a deficit of around 3.7 the first year, 6.7, and then 8.4, which is the same numbers I think on the previous sheet. So... So one of the things that you can start to do is, well, let's assume that we try to exceed the revenue cap. So in this column, if you put in 3 million, Jason.
Is that right?
Yeah.
I don't know.
That was 300.
One more zero. Okay. And then let's, let's put, just put 2 million over here. And then let's just put a million over here, just for starting purposes. So when you do that, you should cut the first year down, still have a negative number. Second year's still a negative number. Third year's, you know, isn't 8 million, it's 2.4. So what would that look like in terms of impact?
What were the numbers that you just hand grand and create?
3 million.
I know, but for what?
For exceeding the revenue cap?
Oh, got it. Okay.
So if we were to ask the public to exceed the revenue cap, basically allow us to increase our budget by those figures. So for 23, 24, and again, we just plugged the numbers, it's 3 million.
Yeah.
And then if we did 2 million the second year, and another million, so that's 3, 4, 5, that's 6 over three years. Correct? So what's the impact on that? So for the first year, it would represent about $103 on a $100,000 property.
Oh, I see.
The second year would represent an additional $65. Third year would represent an additional $30 for a total of about $198 per year in addition.
For a hundred thousand.
For a hundred thousand.
And the average home in Elkhorn is about, what, 250, 270?
Yeah. So you could double that if you looked at, yeah. I just use 100,000 because it's easier to calculate. The other, the other thing we could work with is we have money in our debt service fund that we can use for future debt obligations. The other thing we could do is under levy for our debt service fund to minimize the impact and spread out the cost for the first year or second year. So in this scenario, all I did is just plugged in some dollars. So we reduced our debt service levy by 800,000 the first year, 600,000 the second year. That then lowers the amount of impact. It still gets you to $198. It's just the phase in is a little less. That makes sense? So... So at this point, it might be kind of working back, you know, what's a palatable number and how much to kind of get to that based on the assumption of a 200, $200 increase in terms of revenue.
So this we're looking at two is three-year.
It is.
I know a lot of them went out for five, so yeah.
Well, so this is three, and then it's permanently at that amount.
Yeah. So it's a three-year phase in.
Right, right. I know.
But again, another detailed question, would this then be in place for a certain number of years, which would be a non-recurring or would this be a recurring? Yeah. Now, the samples I think we had out there in the other districts were all recurring referendums.
Right. I think that's what you're getting.
Some of them just put the straight dollar amount. Here's the ultimate dollar amount that we're going to need with, I believe it was a Brona that said like, boom, here's the $19 million that we need. And I think they made the commitment that they would under levy if they didn't need that full amount or adjust according to it, that they sought the authorization for that worst-case scenario that they projected now. And then we saw a number of other examples where they stepped it in for a year like that.
Do you think it helps having that wording in there that
What's that?
Do you think that helps having the wording in there to get that to pass that we're going to be evaluating it?
You can't put that in the question.
Champion of the question.
But you can do it in the
You can do it in your paper. I think so, yeah. Yeah. Because I mean, the reality is, the revenue limit is that's the max that a school board can levy to. A school board can always go under it. It doesn't happen very often, but it does happen.
Then it gives us the question.
Yeah. I, in this scenario, I'm curious, Bill, if we went out, because if we're looking at that scenario, I guess if I'm a community member and I don't know how the board feels, I guess I would ask, well, if you knew you needed that dollar amount, why did you ask for a lesser amount?
Especially after the back right away.
Well, yeah, that would be here. You don't want to do something for years.
Because we still are break even.
Right.
So you may have
No, yeah, you're not. Right.
That fixed one year.
Yeah, right. Now that one.
Maybe the other wild card, which is hard for us to project because for the first time in our district's history is that the last two years that we've had declining resident enrollment, where we sat flat for almost eight or nine years, and now we've had two years in a row of declining enrollment. What that, it slowed down this last year, but what that looks like, even though we've offset some of that impact through the open enrollment, but we also have that other factor, at what time are we going to plateau on your open enrollment and not have that revenue? So I do think it's wise to budget at a zero to eight. And that may be a little aggressive with us being in a declining enrollment cycle that could go down.
Obviously, with those numbers, let's go back up. You know, for the first year, again, we're also now using a million dollars of federal money, which goes away after that year. So, you know, if you didn't have that, it still would be probably a negative number. But certainly looking at the bottom line, that's gets us much closer. And of course, when you get up to that third year, you know, even back, I guess, you know, prior to, you know, raising the revenue cap, when we were projecting beyond two years, we probably were looking at much negative numbers.
We were, yeah. We were happy to mitigate about 800, 900,000 every year. And we were able to do that through open enrollment and large part dollars and attrition or shifting that. So I'd love to have a year where we weren't projecting.
So what do you, what do you think is sufficient to accommodate this, Bill? You don't want to ask good fellows?
Well,
I mean realistically.
Like putting a more dollars in the first year, you're building your base. So that does help.
Yeah.
You know, if you're looking at how to mix this, sort of speak, then I think it becomes, is there a way of doing this so that the impact maybe isn't, and I don't know what the magic number is here, but we would have some resources, if you could put in, say, 900,000 there, Jason, rather than eight, fucking. That's 106. But even if we, we could use some more of that cash, what I was getting at is getting that probably below $100. That's all. But that's just a detail.
Yeah. But that's palatable. When we look at things like this year's taxes.
And that's 1.7 of our 2.3 million dollars we pay out in debt service to offset the impact. Again, at the end of three years, the cost is still the same.
Right, right.
It's just we're using debt service to offset the first few years.
Right.
Does that make sense to everyone? So basically, we're blowing our debt service levy because we have the cash to pay our obligations.
When we're looking at this type of scenario, that would put us close to the current state average. But what state ra, state average would be by 25, 26.
Yeah.
We'd still probably be a little state average.
Yeah.
What is the state average per pupil?
You know, the state average.
For cost per student, it's probably like 14,000-ish, 14,000 per student.
We're about $1,000.
Our revenue cap is, our cost per student is probably closer to that 11, 8.
Yeah, about 11,000.
So about 3,000, so about 3,000.
So 3,000 times.
3,700.
I mean, that would put our revenue cap
Well, that'd be sweet if we could get 3,000 to 3,700.
Yeah.
For us at the average?
Fortunately, it'd be 11 million just to get to average.
So we're 11 million below average. So even that, what's that total that we're, because I moved that to four, so does that put the total at seven after three years? So that's still 4 million below current state average.
Right.
At this point.
Yeah.
I would love to just be at state average.
Right.
Because we've always, since I've been here, said we're below state average.
Low.
Yeah.
Way below.
But isn't year two, aren't we still like 700,000 under? Yes. I'm just worried about healthcare. I think we're going to get
Go away.
I mean, that's, that's not going away, and I think we need to be prepared for that.
What was the, can you go back up the numbers? Like, again, it was four, two, and one?
Yeah, that's, well, they're right down here. It's just four, two, and one. So it's seven over three years.
Am I adding? We need to take
Yeah.
To get above.
If we did four, three, two, or the
Just to get us at
Just to know where the numbers are.
Yeah. Yeah. Put in the, change to two to three.
Yeah.
The two, the three, and the, yep.
The one, two, two.
And then the one to the two?
Yeah.
So at the end of the second year, we're cooking with gas.
Cooking with gas.
And it costs 80% more.
But it increases.
So the total is 297 per 100,000.
400, yeah. So you're talking a minimum of $700, $700 per an average child.
If you can go over the mil rate chart, Bill, and see what
Yeah.
You know, one of the, it's one of those figures that looking at it over time, that people seem to be able to consistently follow. We noticed in most of the print materials, that's what they shared with people, was here's what your mil rate would do over time. Is this sheet linked to those projected numbers?
It is. I believe, let me go up here and double check, but I can't get it, Jason. Yeah, it is. We got the four.
So let's look and see what that does to the mil rate that's compared to the past.
So this year, we're at the 7, 7, 1. So, you know, you're at 9.51, 9.44. And then as you start going forward, so the first year would be, impact would be here. After three years, you're at 10.10.
Where was it in 2011? Just basically decrease since 2012.
Yeah.
Oh, you don't have a
Yeah, I'll go back quite that far in this, but
We will.
But, you know, you have to also look at motivation as well as much. So it's
I know, that's why, that's the point.
Yeah. So that's why you can't, it doesn't really compare going back to
If you go back far enough, it's like 14.74.
Right, right.
But you look at
Yeah, because mil rate went down this year, but the, the
Percent.
Percent, yeah, the values went up, so.
Right. It was 10, it was 2, it was 10.45 in 2012. Well, by 25, you have, and almost back to the 2012. Right, so right.
Paul, any thoughts from, as we go through this?
Um, not really, just more confusion. But I, I think what we have to get the general public to understand is if you look in the past, the districts that didn't move forward with referendums, it caught up to them down the road. So you have to stay ahead of the game to keep winning. And if you look at some of the surrounding schools that did not choose to stay up to speed by increasing their, their revenues, in the long run, it impacted them even heavier. So we just have to get that delicate balance figured out where we want to stay on top, but we want to continue having movement forward rather than sliding backwards. And I think one of our neighboring, just to the east, they experienced it quite a bit, and they're, they're really experiencing difficulties right now because of it.
Yeah. You know, if we could, we've been using, like Bill had mentioned, we've faced those deficits of 800, 900,000 year after year for the last eight or nine years. We've used attrition. That's why our class sizes at the elementary level are pushing 23 students on average as opposed to 18. If we had 16, 17 students in a class, I could say, yes, we could make the choice to raise class sizes, but not having referendums, there's just, there's not that ability, when I look around the district, to say, yep, when this person retires or these positions, we can use attrition and get the savings. It's just not there. We've been playing, playing that game for the last eight years, nine years, and probably, I know before I was here because of things that the board was doing. So it's been years after years that we've been doing this. And, yeah, it's, I, we just, and then the, on top of the state giving a $0 revenue and increases in record inflation, it's just, we had no room to absorb it at that point. But in our defense, districts that were well above the state average on spending per pupil couldn't absorb it. When you look at districts all over the state, they're all having to go to referendum.
Right. And, and we're trying to play the cards, and we don't even know what's being dealt. Because I was reading something the other day, which I thought was really interesting, looking at all the state schools proposing referendums. If the state utilized their surplus right now, they could fund every one of those referendums. And, and that's difficult to, to talk to the community when we don't have control on the cards that are being dealt.
I think what's, what's different here, obviously, when we had a chance earlier today Yeah, I think what's, what's different here, obviously, when we had a chance, um, earlier today, we had a small group, we had a referendum plan, communication, what kind of things we need to start thinking about. So we polled the last referendums in terms of some of the, you know, tortures and impact stuff. And you look at that, of course, those were debt issues basically, but that was twenty-five dollars per hundred thousand, fifteen dollars per hundred thousand.
Right.
Um, and these numbers are obviously a lot different than that. So, you know, it does get back to, you know, our needs, what's palatable for our community. And I think that's, you know, all you have a perception of that. I think it's valuable in our decision process.
And I think a difficult thing with this one right now, too, is it's not visible, um, gains. It's not a new building, it's not a facility, it's not, uh, equipment. You know, it's the behind the scenes, the services and the, the, uh, supports. And people don't recognize that.
Don't support it either.
Right.
Right.
I mean, the biggest thing will be getting, doing the education portion of it will be the hardest thing. Because people don't understand the budgets.
Well, this is the scenario that our politicians have, at least our local ones, our representative. We've had several conversations with Senator Nass, and he's made it very clear that if school districts need more money, don't turn to the legislature for that, go to your community and pass a fine referendum. That's the process and the structure that Phil's operating, some of them believe in. And in their defense, it puts the vote and the decision into the hands of the public rather than them as the politicians forcing that. So I've heard that from his lips several times, go to a referendum, give me more money, and that's the preferred structure. It's just a different, different approach than the past and, you know, three Q E O districts have the budget that's to actually be up here. What we put in the new, this, although Bill was a businessman during the structure. So from a group, are, is that the scenarios you're wanting us to look at and bring back? Are you wanting us to adjust that number?
This does show. A big, a positive number each year based on our assumptions.
We, do you want to look at a scenario where it's not stepped in, it's just asked, here's what that dollar amount is and what that looks like in comparison?
Yeah. It's gonna be too much for you, I'm sorry.
Exactly, I think it needs to step down.
I'd like us to look at, you know, really tapping into the economic action we have.
Okay. Using up all of the debt service deficits or not.
As what scenario to look at and say, okay, well, you know, the community's gonna be all in, we're gonna be all in with our reserves, see where that lands, because that's gonna be very difficult to pass. Yep, that's gonna be really easy to.
Say no to.
Yeah, real easy. That's a substantial amount of money to, uh, to people. And they're not gonna just roll over when, when there's flash of that around. So we gotta make it as palatable as we can. And I don't know whether putting it out over more years makes that more palatable, I, I don't know. But I think it's worth us looking at it. I mean, that's why other districts did that. Um, I'd be curious to see if we tack on two years, does that help us make it more palatable so we can sell it? Because, because when you.
You're gonna like have five years stepping in.
Yeah, because I think what happens is when you tell somebody, yeah, well, this year it's gonna cost you this, and then in three years it's gonna cost you this much more money, that's, that's gonna be real easy for somebody to rally around that and just squash it. And, and, and now we can't even do a good job educating them, they don't care, they don't, they don't think about the money. No, it's not, it's not a dinner out anymore here.
Right, yeah, we tried that approach.
So.
Yeah.
It is, it's a heck of a dinner. Yeah, so. But I, 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 I just think we should look at those numbers to see if it makes it more palatable. If it doesn't, then we, we know that as an answer. But I, I really think that's gonna be a hard sell, in my opinion.
I think the difficulty, from a projection standpoint, if you assume basically, we've seen these numbers, but if our revenues are basically, you know, here they're going up because we put these dollars in there, but if you didn't, they'd be going up like one point two percent, maybe at the most. So if you start projecting forward that, and expenses are still going up four percent, you kind of never catch up. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I.
I think it's a great question, but.
Just, just curious what, what it does say, I mean, I.
Well, when you look at it, certainly, you know, don't wanna make it much work, but it just, it just seems, because we are projecting a lot of things, I mean,
in that amount of time, things can change, I mean, legislation can change, right?
I'm thinking five years, that's where it's gonna be hard, because you don't know how political this is going to be in there. So you really don't want to go off five years, because there's so many unknowns that are on.
But if we, if, I'm just saying, if we look at it as, Jason, then over five years, does that help us be able to sell it? Because we're coming in a less, less aggressive period.
I, I.
That's all.
Yeah, truthfully, I don't think, I think they either, they either are for me to be taking home. So I don't think doing it out over five years is gonna make anybody happy or something.
What if?
I really don't.
What if, from the timeline, we are hoping to have a question ready for the board for approval on January ninth, but what I'm hearing is they're designing to see perhaps some more scenarios being on this little line. I'm wondering, um, January third is a Tuesday, it's right after the break. What if we were to hold things, just a special board meeting, just to look at scenarios? We could, we could prepare, here's what a five-year step-in would look like. I wouldn't mind just showing, here's what, if it's in all in the first year with kind of like some of those other districts, so if we could maybe tease out a couple more scenarios, really pin down what the exact desired structure is from the board, and then that, of course, is probably, maybe Kevin could be at the meeting too, and then that would give us time to put together the question for them.
I think it's the board official opportunity to kind of think, yeah, just.
Yeah, think about it a little bit more.
I'll do the math.
Does that work?
Is this a meeting, I mean, I should.
We would love to have your input. You don't have to attend, have me, you know, it's a special one, so, yeah. But, uh, you're more than welcome if you'd like to.
About your parents' money?
I can tell you, I, I know for a fact that Bill and I were just talking, like, prior to the options referendum, we thought, okay, good. You know, after the last two, we thought, well, maybe, you know, we won't have to have another referendum again. And then we, we had the options project, that, you know, that we needed to address that. And, yeah, so I don't think there's anybody in this room that's excited about having to go to a referendum. Something that I think is necessary, we have to do it for the benefit of the school district, but I can tell you, um, when we did the last referendum, I was, made sure that everything had at least a lifespan of fifteen years, so I wouldn't have to do it. Um, but, you know, this was something we definitely didn't foresee coming down the road, and it's unfortunate that, that we're at this point from a financial standpoint, that it's been forced on us from, you look at what we've been given from the state for the past several years. If we want to maintain the quality of education and not have a system like Kentucky or some of these others, it's, yeah, we are gonna have to get the funding.
Well, yeah, and in the, in the selling of this, we have to, um, we have to lay out that if this doesn't pass, that these are the results, like this is what will happen. If this doesn't pass, you have to go there, unfortunately.
Right, what you can kind of, you know, the needs are still there, right?
Yeah, right, right.
Comes down to.
And you'll have to, like, have it planned out that, okay, so we don't take students on, but then we're, we're in debt for this, financially. Those are the kinds of things, people, so, yeah, you can access students, and you want smaller classes, well, you won't have, because we'll be getting rid of staff to make a bigger class.
Exactly, that's my point, is you have to lay out the scenarios of, this is our new, we had to do the same thing in the building industry.
Right.
Had, everybody's had to adjust to a new normal. No longer a hundred fifty dollars to squirt what's built, can't do it.
Right.
This is what the new normal is.
So, anybody have a question, Dean?
So does that work for everybody's calendar?
For me?
Is it six o'clock? All right. Yeah, I, I think that would be helpful, because I'm not, just not really hearing like a solid. Because this is that we could build a question around at this point, so, I think that's. I want to thank Bill and, and Chris for, that's a master class spreadsheet there.
How many caps you have?
Forty-eight. But I, I'll just say, it, it did have more colors than what I created, but.
It did buy them.
But I, yeah.
But, yeah, as board members, you have a link to that, I'd really encourage you to go to those other examples, you know, see all the questions. And the websites, the videos, there's a lot of very.
If you are gonna dig, dig into that, I would encourage you to dig into the websites a little bit.
Yeah.
Because as I went in there, I discovered more, so per example, like Sun Prairie, their question says nine million dollars, and then after peeling away some of the layers to it, we found out it was three, three, three.
Sure.
Right.
So they staggered it, right? Which I think is a pretty significant change to how they wrote the question, and I'm sure there's a reason they wrote it that way, but.
I just talked to a former school board member today that had one, and it failed, and they did it over five years. So, um, it failed, and because he went out with the bar. Now, this is the reason that she said that that.
Yeah.
And there's, uh, there's a case for that, right, so, sure.
There's a scenario we didn't even put in there, the, the scene did a non-recurring that went to the year, was it twenty fifty?
Oh, wow.
Twenty fifty.
What?
Yeah, Wes played it up, but then technically it's non-recurring because it's set to expire.
Right.
So don't be a school board member in the scene in.
In twenty fifty, yeah.
Fifty-one.
Yeah.
Twenty fifty-one, whatever, I, no, well, I mean, I could be off on that year, but it's.
Right.
The scene we did by, like, five votes.
It went to the Supreme Court?
Went to the Supreme Court, it was up now. It was a hundred million dollar referendum, I believe a hundred million at the end.
Why you weren't there?
Well, I don't recall this year.
Yeah.
It was huge.
It was.
Only two million a year.
Yeah.
I don't recall that, I probably mistaken on it, but, yeah. It went out a long way. All right.
Is this an open meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
That's in the present.
It's just called a special meeting because it's not on the regular schedule. Oh, it'll be posted publicly, it's.
Personal.
All right. Let's start letting it write down this, um. Uh, the personnel sheet is before you, we had resignations of Joanne Harrington, Christine Dodge, and Kiara Stilling. We want to thank them for the service for the school district and wish them well, uh, as they go on to their new positions. Uh, we have a transfer of Michelle Kennedy, um, from the, um, school secretary position over at the high school. She'll be filling, uh, the position that Erica Ready was in at Jackson. And then the appointment of Carrie Crews, the middle school coach, Lena Glassell, will be returning to her position at the high school, student services secretary, and Ryan, um, Ebbett is a high school custodian, and he'll be replacing Jacob.
Questions, Mr. Tebba?
I move to approve the personal recommendation sheet for December twelfth, twenty twenty-two, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing a background check and district mandated drug scheme as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So move the second into approving the personal recommendation sheet for December twelfth, twenty twenty-two, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated drug scheme as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhar, is excused. Zingersong?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Sparrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
School gifts?
Uh, the school gifts, we've got three this evening, Gail Bryce donated two hundred fifty dollars to the Upper East Area School District Parent Connections Program. The members of the class of nineteen seventy-two donated three hundred dollars to the E H S drama department, remember, Gabriela Lehman. And St. Patrick's Church donated one thousand dollars to the St. Patrick's Program, thank you to them.
I approve the generous school gifts, as presented.
I move to accept the generous school gifts, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So move the second into accepting generous gifts of Gail Bryce, members of the class of nineteen seventy-two, and St. Patrick's Church, as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Gayhar is excused, Mrs. Zingersong?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Sparrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Budget development calendar. Traditionally, the board approved a budget development calendar in December for the upcoming budget process, which really won't start till January, um, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The major tasks and responsibilities and, and timetable is similar to previous years, just updated the dates.
So you moved the, uh, board.
Yes.
From March to April?
Yeah, for, for a couple of reasons, but probably obvious, because, you know, if you go with the referendum, you get the results of that.
Right.
And I think the other reason is, it's the state by any budget process, so we're more likely to know maybe more what's gonna happen in Madison than we would expect to worry, so those are the two reasons I was thinking of moving it to April, that's what the board.
I like it, it won't complicate.
Yeah, that's always been like, it's true.
Or it's kind of my birthday or my anniversary. So, yeah, I don't know, we probably are.
Any questions on the calendar?
I will approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget development calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So move the second into approving the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget development calendar as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhar is excused, Mrs. Zingersong?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Sparrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yeah.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Um, the next board meeting is no longer January ninth, it's now January third.
Oh, great, yeah.
And we do have a closed session this evening. I, one other point of order on the budget, having it in April would also allow any new school board members that are applicable to.
Yes, I did rank of that, yeah.
Not that they couldn't attend in March, you just know what happened.
No, I did.
Oh, you did, yeah, we've always invited, yeah, there were people running.
Yeah, right. Okay. Do we have anybody running? But we'll have the elections.
Not really, for sure.
Okay.
We have always invited.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, speaking of which, I know Jody mentioned a number of weeks ago that, yeah, the two board members, um, Jenny Ray and Paul Martel, and that puts you both on the spot, but do either of you, would you like to make a public announcement either way in regards to concessions to run in and out?
I can't see you, Paul, as well, sir. I am not running, so I've met with community members, um, if anybody wants to reach out, I'm willing to meet the copy. Um, would love to see a ton of names on the ballot. It's been a good six years.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Mrs. Ray.
And, uh, I'm still, uh, contemplating, um, I don't feel comfortable not being able to be physically present with my, uh, physical condition right now. Um, so I've been talking over my doctor and we're kind of evaluating from there. I would love to stay involved, but, uh, I don't know if I can compromise my health. So I'm leaning as probably not, uh, rerun, rerunning for it, but I don't know yet.
Okay. All right, um, I believe. All right, um, I believe the deadline for submitting candidacy is January third, for those who are not currently on the school board.
I will, it's definitely.
Oh, it's January.
Yeah, it's like, is it February twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth?
No, no, for those who are not currently on the school.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
December twenty-third for those who are. Right, yes.
Wow, okay, yeah.
All right.
Sorry.
That's all I have, other than, uh, we need to adjourn to closed session.
I move to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eighty-five for a month for C and for D, to discuss a contract for a teacher and to review the written valuations of the school safety drills. The school board will reconvene in open session for action as appropriate regarding closed session business and or to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
So move the second into adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eighty-five for C and D, to discuss a contract for a teacher and to review the written valuations of the school safety drills. The school board will reconvene in open session for action as appropriate regarding closed session business and or to adjourn.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
On Mr. Gayheart's excuse, Mrs. Zingersong?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Sparrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton? Uh, Ms. Williams?
I also.